Welcome again to the Mesa City Council meeting for April the 1st of 2024. Our council is pretty much here, but Councilmember Goforth is unable to attend and is excused, and Councilmember Summers is attending virtually. All other, like I say, council members are present. We'll begin the meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Michael Hyden of La Mesa Ministries, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, Son, and Spirit, thank you so much for this past holy week where Jesus, you laid down your life and took it back up again for our forgiveness and for us to have new and abundant life. And thank you for the men and women you've raised up to be leaders here in this community. Fill them just with your strength and your wisdom. And to be with this meeting, I do pray that your presence and your peace and your goodness rule and reign during this time. And it's in the most precious and powerful name, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for the prayer. We do have a couple of items under awards, recognitions, and announcements. I will also note that just immediately prior to our study session, an hour or so ago, we also presented a proclamation on Child Abuse Prevention Month and did a photo opportunity there with some of the great folks in our community that help with child abuse prevention. Tonight, though, we have two proclamations under this agenda. The first is to proclaim April 6th through 12th of this year as the Week of the Young Child in Mesa. The Week of the Young Child is designed to celebrate the organizations, teachers, and policies that support early learning opportunities for all children. From First Things First to the National Association for the Education of Young Children, local, state, and national groups focus on our youngest residents' future. Here to accept the proclamation and tell us more about the Week of the Young Child is Dr. Anna Purra Ganesh, faculty chair of Early Childhood Education at Mesa Community College. Dr. Ganesh, thank you. We know you run one of the highest-rated pre-K programs in the state, so thank you for doing that.
To respect the time, I wrote down my remarks.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Early Childhood Community, your vision, your passion, and dedication to Mesa's youngest children is very much appreciated. My name is Anna Purna Ganesh. I serve as a volunteer Regional Partnership Council member for the First Things First Southeast Maricopa Region, and I work as an Early Childhood Education faculty member at Mesa Community College. As Arizona's Early Childhood Agency, First Things First is the only state funding source dedicated exclusively to the beginning of the education continuum. First Things First invests early childhood funds in programs and services that address the development, education, and health needs of children birth to age five at the state and local levels. We know that economic development starts with the focus on early childhood years. In fact, evidence shows that quality early learning programs result in short and long-term economic benefits to individuals and communities. This year, the nationally recognized Week of the Young Child, as mentioned by you, Mayor Giles, is being celebrated next week from April 6th to the 13th. First Things First has partnered with the Arizona Association for the Education of Young Children to join the annual national celebrations that focuses attention on early learning and the educators who support the positive development of young children. This is a time when we can reach out to our communities to celebrate young children and acknowledge the contributions of parents, teachers, caregivers, and community members on behalf of young children. Young children are our future, and there are many ways that the City of Mesa community members can come together for children. Some of these ideas are supporting early literacy initiatives, thanking educators and caregivers who educate and nurture young children, and work toward public policies that benefit all young children. On behalf of the early childhood community, I express my sincere gratitude. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for the great work you do in our community, and I'm sure Councilmember Spillsbury is frustrated. She would like to talk about childhood literacy and some of the other priorities that we've set as a community. But, and I'm sure we'll get plenty of opportunities to talk about, but this is very much a need in our community, and we appreciate those who are stepping up to help us address it. Council, let's go and take a photograph with Dr. Ganesh and celebrate this proclamation.
We have members from our Southeast Regional Partnership Council. Can they join us?
Please invite them up, yes. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm going to stand in the middle because I'm holding the paper. So let's fill in if we can. Barry, you can sit right up front of it. I'm going to hand that to you.
That's in council district order, right?
Great. Do you want to come join us?
Yeah, Beth, come up.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. I'm proud to proclaim April of 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Mesa. This month recognizes the passing of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, which sought to eliminate discrimination in housing opportunities and to further housing choices for all Americans. Here to accept the proclamation and to tell us more about fair housing is City of Mesa Community Services Development Director Mary Brandon. Mary, did you know that we were calling your number on this? Come on up. Thank you. No, I'm sorry. Michelle, our housing director, will also be part of this.
Mary tells me it's my turn.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We greatly appreciate your support in honoring the proclamation for fair housing. The Fair Housing Act protects people from discrimination when they are renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, seeking housing assistance, as well as engaging in any other housing-related activities. So we are going to be celebrating this month by promoting and educating the community, as well as doing social media updates, press releases. So we definitely thank you for supporting fair housing.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to add, Mary? Thumbs up, all right. The boss did a good job, didn't she? All right, thank you, council. Let's go down and again, take another photo with this proclamation. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We'll invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to please read the consent agenda. Kevin, during our study session, we removed item 5C, if you didn't hear that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2 approval minutes of previous meetings as written. Item 3A, Act on Liquor License Application for American Patriots Riders Club, one-day event, April 19th, 922 South Country Club Drive. Item 3B, Act on Liquor License Application for Ultimate Imaginations, one-day event, April 20th, in the streets of the Mesa Downtown Entertainment District on North McDonald between Pepper Place and Main Street. Item 3C, Act on Liquor License Application for La Cenex Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization, one-day event, April 27th, 7900 East Eagle Crest Drive. Item 3D, Act on Liquor License Application for Mariscos Mazatlan XX, 1352 East Broadway Road. Item 3E, Act on Liquor License Application for Total Wine &amp; More, 1834 South Signalbeat Road. Item 3F, Act on Liquor License Application for Revel Surf Beach Grill Pavilion, 4503 South Power Road. Item 4A, approving contract for downtown restaurant Incubator Project, guaranteed maximum price. This project's funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Item 4B, approving contract for Gateway Library, construction manager at risk, guaranteed maximum price, number two of three. This project's funded by 2018 General Obligation Bonds and the General Obligation Fund. Item 4C, approving contract for Fire Station 223, pre-construction services and construction manager at risk. This project's funded by 2022 Public Safety Bonds. Item 4D, approving contract for Fire Station 224, pre-construction services and construction manager at risk. This project's funded by 2022 Public Safety Bonds. Item 4E, approving use of a cooperative contract for risers, steps, and riser skirting for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. This purchase is funded by the transient lodging tax. Item 4F, approving three-year term contract with two years of renewal options for a streetlight monitoring system with nodes for the transportation department. Item 4G, approving use of a cooperative contract for the purchase of one five-yard mini concrete mixer body truck for the transportation department. This purchase will be funded by the local street sales tax. Item 5A, approving resolution modifying fees and charges of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 5B, approving resolution extinguishing a portion of a 20-foot public utilities easement located at 2055 West Riverview Auto Drive to allow for construction of multifamily development. Item 5C has been removed from the consent agenda. Item 5D, approving resolution to acquire natural gas pipeline transmission capacity through participation in the bidding process and approving entry of associated contracts upon a successful bid for additional natural gas transportation capacity at its Clausen Gate Station. Item 6A, introduction of ordinance zoning case 23-940 for property generally located north of Baseline Road on the east side of Mesa Drive. This is for a rezone of the new planned area development overlay and major site plan modification to allow for modification to two automobile dealerships. And item 7A, approving subdivision plot for Enclave at Mountain Bridge, property generally located south of McKelf's Road and west of Ellsworth Road. Mayor and councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. We don't have any other requests to take an item off the consent agenda, do we?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, thank you. We have a motion for approval by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Ms. Spillsbury. Please vote. Mr. Summers, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Okay, the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Goforth absent. First item off of the consent agenda is the agenda item 5C. This is approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city and RN1 Real Estate LLC for approximately 25 acres of city-owned land at the southwest corner of University and Mesa Drive. Mr. Freeman, I know you asked to have this taken off the consent agenda. Would you, anything you'd like to say on this item?
I would, thank you, Mayor. Chris, Mr. Brady, I was just thinking, how long have we owned this property? How many years has it been? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
It had to be...
Twenty-something?
Like 94. Late 90s, yeah. Mayor, ask the man next to you. He was probably, he was the one that was here.
Mayor, how long have you owned this property?
Since before 1996.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Brady, but I've been thinking about this and the importance of this opportunity we have to develop the property. And I remember, I think it was about six years ago, we entered into a robust discussion with the neighborhoods and how the neighborhood's input would be important for this development. And then, obviously, that development fell through, so now we're with Cul-de-sac. And I know they build a great product. However, I'm still, I'm very concerned about the parking on the property because realistically, most of us drive everywhere. And I know we're trying to create a niche here in this development, have walkability and using public transportation with parking as well. But I see that still not having enough parking. Another thing is the timelines to build this. I think the timelines are, I think we're talking maybe 10 years out on everything, so a lot can change between now and then. But more importantly, I want to see the neighborhood input on this whole project, and that hasn't happened. I know Mr. McVeigh, during the days, we spent a lot of time with the neighborhood discussion, and I felt like that was extremely important. So with that, I just took it off the consent agenda just to discuss some of my concerns. So with that, I'll yield to the blue card or whomever wants to speak.
Thank you. We have one blue card from the public, Tim Boyle. Tim, welcome.
Hi. Welcome, or thank you, Mayor, and members of council for letting me speak. I'm an architect and I'm a developer. I lived in New York for 10 years, so I've lived without a car for 10 years, so I know something about what that's like. I teach urban planning at ASU, and so I'm looking a lot at how do we get our city to the next level, and I'm always thinking ahead, how do we do that? I've also started doing developments as well, so I do architecture, and then we're starting to do some of our own developments. The theory being, lousy stuff will come in and you can try to stop it, but if you just build good stuff, then the lousy stuff can't get in because the good stuff comes in first. That's using the market to do it. Three things I'm concerned about, about the Site 17, I would say them the three A's. One, that it needs to be amazing. Two, it needs adequate parking. And three, it should be part of the American dream. It needs to be amazing. I saw there were two proposals originally. One had movie studios and was kind of playing off of ASU's film school that we have now in downtown. I feel like this, as it gets to its next iterations, should definitely emphasize the new identity that we're going to have. We've got this film school now. I think we should do something more with it. We shouldn't just forget that we've put this giant building back here. We should do something with it. I think we should reiterate that. The Cul-de-sac project in Tempe is fantastic. The architecture's fun. It's fun to walk through. If you see the top, everything is skewed in neat and interesting ways. This plan doesn't do that currently, and I don't know if this is just a kind of a placeholder for how it's going to go, but I would consider discussing with them, how do you make this feel unique and interesting with building placement and everything like they did in Tempe? Second is adequate parking. I have a similar concern with Councilmember Freeman. I've been reading that it's described as a light rail-related project, but it's a third of a mile to two-thirds of a mile from the closest light rail stop, which means a five to a 15-minute walk. And in our famous summers in Arizona, five to 15-minute walk is something pretty hard to do. I've tried to do it many times when I first moved back from New York in August, which was not the right time to move back here from New York. We tried walking to the Fry's to do our grocery shopping like we did in New York, and we almost died. So I would caution us on significantly reducing the parking. I think there's currently planned 800 spaces for 1,000 units. What we've noticed in our developments, when people don't, there's not enough parking, people will park elsewhere, and we always consider that. If there's a street they can park on, if there's something they can park on, great. If there's not parking here, will people start parking at the grocery store to the south or to the, you know, the place to the south? Will they be carrying groceries across university? Will people jaywalk across university? That's something concerning to me. There's not a good space. If there's not adequate parking, there's not a good space for that parking to go. And then finally, the American dream. Mesa was designed as an American dream city many years ago with reduced property taxes and everything so you could own your own home in Mesa. I have six children of a rising generation, and they have thousands of friends, all of whom don't have any hope that they're going to be able to purchase a house at any time in the future. And so I know that the market gets to decide whether things are for rent or for sale. I would strongly emphasize any project that the city is sponsoring and pushing to make that project for sale. That's what builds a foundation, builds a long-lasting group of people living in the city, and that's what keeps our kids coming back. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Council, any discussion on this item? Ms. Spillsbury?
Yeah, I guess I would just ask what, how much flexibility do we have? Is this, this is just the MOU, right? So a specific site plan, things can still be looked at, changed with feedback. I mean, I also have the same concerns with parking, obviously, because I always do. And, yeah, again, same boat with kids and places to live and wanting people to own. And anyways, there's a lot of things we've talked about that I would like to have more input on. Excited about this partnership with Cul-de-sac, but definitely think there's things we need to work out. So we have room to do all of that still, correct?
Mr. Smith?
Mayor and council, yes. The MOU is just sort of the starting point, right? It sets out sort of the beginning of the negotiations in a general direction, but we're not locked into it. So, but, you know, the developer obviously wants to know if they're going in the right direction, and obviously, they're hearing feedback tonight, too, also. And so, but we're not, we're not bound by it. It's a non-binding agreement, and as we've seen in other MOU situations, there are changes that occur over time.
Okay. I mean, the last thing we want to do is make so many issues that they end up backing out and we lose this opportunity again. So that's obviously not what any of our goal is, but, yeah, I think there are some things we need to just make sure that we're looking at really carefully, parking being one of them, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Just a few comments. We talked about a lot of these things at length during study session, but Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong. We have the MOUs, the general understanding of what the objectives of the site will accomplish and the community goals and such, right? So our agreement to move forward on these basic, the basic context of this development. Then we're going, we're getting an appraisal, and then we have a development agreement and how the price of the land, what will be built. We'll have that development agreement cover the entire, all phases or just the first phase? All phases. And how it's all going to work, and we'll be able to get a little bit more concrete. It's going to go through a rezone, so it's going to go through the public process and planning and zoning and go through council again, and then we'll get into designs and things like that. But the objective of this property is to be car-light, so we don't want to get into the ratios that we have across the city. They prioritize mobility, community, and open space, and they prioritize transit over cars and parking. And that's the concept of this development of Cul-de-sac is doing this. And they're talking about other options to make those, to move from the development into downtown or to transit or other places through shuttles, bike sharing, car sharing options. If you need a car, you can rent a car for just the time that you need it. You don't have to own a car, which is much more efficient for the cost of living, for sure. So, and as time goes on, our downtown needs to be that way. We need to centralize where we do park, minimize the use of cars to navigate across the street for the groceries to the other side of downtown, that maybe we can shuttles and have these wonderful micro mobility or micro multi-use paths to have other options. And it certainly decreases the cost of living to not have to own a car. I own a car. I live in downtown. I did go one year without a car, just to see how long I could go, and then I got this job at council, and I'm darting across this city. But I spent so much less money in not having to own a car and this Uber when I needed one. So there's a, if we can be more efficient in being able to navigate within the densest part of our city and have all your services and amenities within a short distance, if a family can get down to just one car or maybe just rent it when they need it, it's a huge improvement in the quality of life when we're people-oriented instead of transit-oriented. And this is one of the reasons I love Cul-de-sac and what they represent. It's a lifestyle. It's a choice. We have all kinds of other developments in single-family housing all around downtown. You can choose the lifestyle that you want. I'm not worried about, I think it's, we're moving into the future by agreeing to move forward with Cul-de-sac, and so I'm not concerned about the parking. And the American dream, I think, is of owning a house, but is it really? People want an excellent quality of life. Owning, ask the young people. A lot of them don't want a house, and they want, they want to move wherever. I think the quality of life is the most important. The American dream being tied to a house, I think, is very limiting in the idea of what the American dream is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? I'll add my two cents. My priority for this location has always been, I wanted this to be a neighborhood that people could be proud of, a place like Eastmark or Dobson Ranch or Red Mountain Ranch or one of the Citrus Neighbors, where people are asked, where do you live? They'll be proud of this neighborhood, and they'll say, I live in Cul-de-sac Mesa, and they'll be proud of that. And this, this is not an unknown entity. The Cul-de-sac development in Tempe has been very successful. We were at an awards banquet just a week ago, picking up some awards for the city of Mesa, and one of the honorees was the Cul-de-sac Tempe development because it is very high quality, and there is a long waiting list for people to move into Cul-de-sac Tempe because it's well-planned, it's well-executed, and I am, I'm excited that we have Cul-de-sac to partner with in this, this piece of dirt that has been, that has challenged us for decades, many decades. So I'm genuinely excited. Now, this will not be a carbon copy of Cul-de-sac Tempe. This will be Cul-de-sac Mesa, and it is not located directly on the light rail, so there will be accommodations to, that reflect that. It's not, you know, Tempe is cars zero, so there will be parking here for folks with cars. And frankly, if you are tied to a car, you won't want to live here. And there's plenty of, you know, Melody on Main and many other wonderful options for people that, that are tied to an automobile. So I, I'm excited because this is, this presents diverse housing. We need to have all types of housing in downtown Mesa. We need to have, yes, we do need to have owner-occupied along with rental properties. And right now, this project is presenting with a long, you know, significant amount of townhomes that are proposed to be for sale by, you know, for sale properties. So there is some diversity here. It's, again, this is a developer and a project that is going to be high-quality. I think it will attract other businesses, other people to our downtown, so I am very excited about going forward with Cul-de-sac. All right, having said that, is there a motion on this agenda item? Councilmember Spillsbury has made a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Duff. Please vote. Councilmember Summers, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Motion passes with five ayes. Councilmember Freeman voting no, and Councilmember Goforth absent. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item eight, is a presentation on the heat relief program and heat relief services offered in the city of Mesa and Maricopa County. And after the presentation, we have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County to accept funds related to the provision of heat relief services in Mesa, including a day respite center. Lindsay Belinky, thank you for being here. Thank you for running our human services programming. Tell us a little bit about this, this partnership with, the agreement to accept this funding from Maricopa County.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Lindsay Belinky. I'm the deputy director for our community services department, and I oversee our Office of Homeless Solutions. We are happy and thankful to be receiving funding from the Maricopa County Public Health Department and in collaboration with them. With those funds, we do plan to stand up a day respite center in Mesa in partnership with Resurrection Street Ministries. This is what we did last year, so we are continuing to be there. It was a very successful program, and services will be offered mid-May through September. So a day respite center is, has comprehensive services. It is a place where people can get out of the heat, they can rest, they can receive food and water, and also, there are a lot of wraparound support services. So if someone is homeless and coming to this site, there are opportunities for them to meet with a navigator and... meet with a navigator and hopefully begin to work out of homelessness. We are also excited there will be a new bilingual call center that is provided through the county so that anyone in the county can call and get help in finding a heat relief center, including those in Mesa, and there will be new no-cost transportation assistance opportunities as well as part of the county. These are locations that we know of. So in addition to the day respite center, there will be cooling centers in Mesa, at the Salvation Army in Mesa Can. There's also hydration stations at Positacristo, St. Vincent de Paul, and United Food Bank, and there could be others beyond this. These are the ones we know of today. So we've talked about outreach and who is impacted by the heat-related deaths, and we've heard that there's a lot of data surrounding this. So what we're doing right now is collecting that data and really looking at what happened last year in Mesa and trying to identify what areas are at most risk or where people were impacted most by heat. So this will impact the unhoused population. We are in constant discussion with our first responders, our public safety responders, excuse me, as well as our street outreach teams. So we're talking to them regularly, they are on the street during the summer, they see people, and they know where those hotspots are, so we will make sure that we are all in collaboration on that. We also know that people that are unhoused are also impacted by the heat. So we've provided this information tonight, this will be part of our outreach campaign. As we continue to analyze the data, we'll discover which areas are in need of that outreach. We will do also some social media and really get out into neighborhoods, work with our neighborhood leaders and HOAs and mobile home parks, and help them spread public safety information about heat. We will have some proactive messaging, too, to help people prepare for the heat so that we're not waiting till the middle of the summer to do that. And this slide just reflects the emergency rehab program. Most notable air conditioning repair and replacement would be key to get in motion right now if you would qualify for this program, or if you know someone who might, you have a vulnerable neighbor, this would be great information to share with them, and we will help to get that messaging out as well. There are some eligibility criteria, a phone number here, and we've listed all of this. We do have a Repair My Home website that has all this information. We've also begun to build our summer safety website, and so right now, we do have the emergency rehab information on there and any cooling center or day respite center we know of, and we will continue to build that out, we'll add safety tips, and then we'll use that information, again, to go out into the community and share that.
Thank you, Lindsay. If you don't mind, I do have some questions. I asked to pull this from the consent agenda just so that we could have another public discussion about it and raise awareness about it, so thank you for all that you're doing. Last week, I attended a MAG meeting where the statistic was mentioned that last year in Maricopa County, 650 people died from heat-related causes, which was a 50% increase over the previous year. I suspect that the record-breaking heat that we saw last summer, and most of those deaths occurred during July and August when we were experiencing that extreme heat that we are also familiar with. My concern is, and I know that you and our staff are meeting with Dr. Sunnenshine and the Maricopa County Health Department and others and our fire chief to explore, to do a deeper dive into that, that very somber 650 fatalities number for Maricopa County, and to try to find out how many of those were in Mesa, is there, what can we learn from those statistics? So I'm looking forward to you and the city staff coming back to us with a more detailed interpretation of those statistics so we know if there are mobile home parks or homeless encampments or where we can almost predict with a fair amount of certainty that these deaths are going to occur. So I'm looking forward to that, but I have to say, I'm a little concerned because I think right now that the plan that we just reviewed is pretty much the same thing that we did last summer. Or can you tell me, at this stage, are we proposing doing something different than we did last summer? Or is the funding pretty much static and this is what we can afford to do?
So Mayor, thank you for that question. We are analyzing that data right now, so we have not been provided the details on locations and causes for those unfortunate deaths from last season. We are gathering that, we have a meeting tomorrow with our key staff and departments to further discuss and create that proactive outreach. So we have always reached out to mobile home communities that are more vulnerable and have higher levels of calls for service, and so we will continue to do that, and we will utilize any findings through data that show us, you know, that certain areas are more likely to have issues. We will use that data and do very targeted door-to-door outreach if that's what is warranted. But we have done some of that in the past. Now we're doing a more robust plan, and we are accessing that data, which we have not had access to in the past.
You mentioned the emergency rehab program, and the city has moved significantly more money into that program this year than previously. Can you talk a little bit about that? And also, you mentioned a telephone number for, to alert people of what resources may be available. Is that the 211 number, or is there something else?
Mayor, no, there will, well, we don't know yet. The county is developing that number right now, so as soon as we have that, we will place that on our summer safety page and begin to spread the word about that. It is not functioning right now, it would function just during the high-heat months, and they are, we've asked them for it after last week's meeting, we will, they don't have it yet. So I believe it will be, it may be in addition to 211, so we'll let you know as soon as we have that information. Emergency rehab program, it does grant assistance up to $25,000 for an emergency repair, so those repairs are highlighted here. Again, primarily in the, in the summer months and related to heat-related deaths, we would look at the repair and replacement of air conditioning. So what we want the public to know right now is if you know someone that is vulnerable, older, and unable to make this repair themselves, and they, you know they have an air conditioning that's not functioning, we want to hear from you now and see if you might apply for this, qualify for this program so that we can start doing that proactively before it gets too hot and they really need that service to be safe.
Great, thank you. I think that's the message we want at this point, that's what we know and what we want to get out.
That's right.
And I'll just, again, say, I know that city staff is committed to addressing that unacceptable number of deaths in Maricopa County, and I don't know how many of them are in Mesa, but I'm anxiously looking forward to finding out how and where those people died and what we can do in addition to what we've done previously to lower those, to lower that total. And I know I speak for the entire council when I say...
Yes, Mayor, I hear you loud and clear, and we will be sure to do that.
All right, thank you. Council, any additional discussion on this item? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Lindsay. In case of an emergency, where's the respite center going to be at?
It will be at 1135 East Main Street is where the day respite center is. So again, that's a fuller service of options, there are other cooling centers in the community, and those are more of like air conditioning and water is available, not as many services. And again, those are on our website right now of what we know and will add any more as they become available.
So I think in some of our districts, we have aging trailer parks, like I mentioned before, so it's important for us to message to those trailer parks to where they can get help, and then in case they need a place to go temporarily, then this is the perfect place. And then utilize our emergency services and then navigators as well, will they help?
Yes, if we're aware of a community that needs outreach and to, we can activate people and help educate or get them connected to services.
So do we have a hotline then?
We have the homeless resource line, so there will be, all of our heat-related services and access to assistance will be on that line, and then we will also have that transportation and helpline that the county is standing up as well.
Okay. Maybe it'd be helpful if our council districts had that, maybe give that to our district coordinators, and then we can put that on our websites as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Council, any additional discussion on this item? All right, thank you very much, Lindsay. We'll look forward to ongoing discussions about this before the high temperatures hit so we can hopefully come up with a good response. Council, is there a motion to proceed? Thank you, Councilmember Spillsbury, for making that motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Haredia. Please vote. Mr. Summers, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously with Councilmember Goforth absent. Next item on our agenda are items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this agenda item?
No requests, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.